States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you'd all remain standing, please, for a moment of silence in honor of our servicemen and women and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Oh, yes, do you have a moment of silence? One second, Steve, let me put my mic on.
Acknowledge that First Lady Rosamyn Carter's memorial service was today, and she served very honorably as First Lady, but then also her and her husband have done wonderful things afterwards. So I just thought I would take a moment of silence for Mrs. Carter.
Thank you, Counsel Winslow. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Here.
Counselor Condon.
Here.
Counselor Crowe.
Here.
Counselor O'Leenahan.
Here.
Counselor McDonald.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yeah.
Counselor Sika.
Yeah.
Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Spatafora.
Yeah.
Counselor Winslow.
Here.
Counselor Barbara Murphy.
Yeah, here. For those of you in attendance, please be advised that under provisions of the open meeting law, UMA Urban Media Arts will be recording tonight, so just be aware there will be audio and video recording. Okay. First order of business is public comment. Under public comment, each speaker is allowed, is limited to subject matter, relevant to the evening's agenda, and must keep their comments to two minutes or less. Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
No.
Okay, there is no public comment tonight. Moving right along. Get to the favorite part of the agenda lately, and that is the consent agenda. I know. This evening's consent agenda consists of meeting minutes from November 14th and 17th, petitions being referred to license. Does any counselor have a desire to remove any of these items from the consent agenda for the purpose of further discussion? Seeing none and hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion to approve by Counsel Winslow, seconded by Counsel Condon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. The next, the next order of business, oh, that was perfect timing. That was perfect timing. You're, you are, you are perfectly on time. Nate, while you get set up, why don't you hand me the documents, please, and I'll pass them out. Okay. And Clerk, if you would like to read the next order of business?
Yes. Paper 446-23, order that the city council adopt a residential exemption of 30% and a minimum residential factor for the fiscal year 2024 tax rate as presented by Assessor
I know, Mr. Kramer, you're just getting set up, but, you know, I would ask you, when you're ready to up to the podium, which you are, state your name and address, and then you may begin your presentation. But obviously, we need to make sure you're set up first. I'm gonna just put the mic on on the podium for you.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, are you ready?
It doesn't seem to want to go up on the projector, but that's okay, because you all have copies, right?
Okay. We are being televised, though, so if there, if there is a way to get it up there, it is wonderful for the general public to be able to follow along with us. Just see.
Yeah. Plug in, I have one of these things.
Let me just.
There you go.
Oh, there you go.
I see it on this screen. I see it on this screen. So I, I don't think, that projector's not on.
I did. Well, the projector is on.
Projector's on.
Yeah. That's the podium monitor.
Teamwork, teamwork, teamwork. I love it.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm Nate Kramer, the city assessor, 215 Pleasant Street, Suite 240, Malden. Tonight is the annual classification presentation, where we select a minimum residential factor a, in the residential exemption. Which is what I just said. The minimum residential factor, so a factor of one for fiscal '24 would yield a single tax rate of $10.41 per thousand of value, and that's determined by that equation there, which is the total levy, divided by the value in that, divided by 1,000, which, which gets at the tax rate. Chapter 200 allows communities to select a factor of less than one, hereby shifting more of the tax burden onto the CIP classes of properties, and CIP is commercial, industrial, and personal property. Historically, Malden has chosen the maximum allowable levy shift factor to afford residential taxpayers the lowest share of the tax burden allowed by state law. This right here is just, this is what's going on in the market. So this data is not from our database, it's actually from the MLS system. So you can see, for fiscal '24, we're looking at calendar year 2022, and this is what the market, this is just what the market has done over the years. You can see going into calendar '23, which will be fiscal '25, the values are, they still continue to climb somehow, despite these interest rates. Here are the list of options we have. There's just, Malden historically goes with the highest they can, so I didn't put them all in here. I started at 1, and 1, 1.25, 1.5, and 1.75. So with the 1.75 shift, it would create a tax rate of $11.70 per thousand on the residential, and $18.21, and that includes the residential exemption. So you might recall the single rate up top, just to explain this a little bit. If we had a single tax rate, it would be $10.41, but because we have the residential exemption, it would never be 10.41 for both residential and commercial. So that's why those numbers are a little bit different. So using those different shifts, these are the estimated tax rates and estimated bills. So this is the average residential bill. The average residential value is 743,873, so that is inclusive of all the residential properties, not just single families. It includes condos, multifamilies, large apartment buildings, and such. So the estimated bill, based on the average value, would be $8,703. That does not include the exemption. The max shift results in an average of $892 savings to the average residential taxpayer. And here is that same slide, but with commercial, industrial, and personal property numbers. So the average commercial value this year is 1.287,942. That is inclusive of also the personal property, which tends to skew things a little bit, because some of our utility values are so high. We have, I think, two accounts that are approaching $100 million each. So that's why that number looks so high. So that 23, that average bill of 23,453 will not be experienced by most commercial taxpayers. This is definitely skewed with those, with those really high-valued buildings. So with the maximum allowable shift allowed, the selected MRF would be 0.9068. The tax rates would be 1170 for residential, 1828 for CIP. The rates could change slightly during the approval process. At sometime, I think last year, maybe the commercial rate changed a penny. It's very slight. And below that is a history of the prior year's tax rates. So you can go, the residential rate's actually going down about 49 cents for fiscal '24 compared to last year, and the commercial rate's also going down. The residential exemption, there are now 17 communities statewide that have adopted it. Malden adopted it in 2008. The exemption amount for fiscal '23 was $2,521.43. Of the 12,612 residential properties, right now there are 8,093 currently receiving it. This is the lowest number. We instituted a new system a few years ago, and we've gotten several hundred people off of it that shouldn't have been getting it. I believe it was pushing 8,900 when I started. Now it's, today, it's 8,093. There is a break-even point with the residential exemption. This year, that, that number is $1,159,239. So basically, if your value's above that, you, you just, all you do is pay the higher tax rate. You don't get any savings. So here's a breakdown of the number of properties that wouldn't benefit. So of the single-family homes, there's only 10. Condos are a none. Two families are 17. Three families are 20. 109s, which are multiple houses on one lot, there's 12. And then you can see the 111 and 112, those are the larger apartment buildings, there's over 200, so they really bear the weight of, of most of this program. This just shows the difference from '23 to '24, the average residential value. Now that includes, this is just single family. Or no, this is, average residential value is all residential. So last year, I got confused, because the number's so much bigger this year. Last year was 689,480. This year it's 743,873. You can see the tax rates dropping. Average residential tax bill does go up. These numbers do not include the exemption. And then below that is, are the same numbers with the, with the commercial numbers, where those have gone. Commercial actually is showing that it went down, because the, the commercial, commercial market is taking, starting to take a hit. Here are newbred communities that also have the exemption. That's just a comparison. Malden kind of falls right in the middle, as far as the residential tax bill with the exemption. Last year was 5,833. All of these are fiscal '23 numbers, because not every other community has, has done this And here are just neighboring communities. So I think of these, only one of them has it. It's Everett. But it shows Malden, Saugus, Everett, Melrose, just our border, border towns that, shows where they are in comparison. Last year, you might recall, we did a 1.74 shift. We weren't able to go to the full shift. And that wraps it up for me, so the, the council needs to determine whether to go with the maximum allowable shift, and, and also whether they want to proceed with the residential exemption program. And obviously, any questions you have, feel free.
Nate, thank you. I'm sure you'll, there'll be a number of lights popping up, but before that happens, because we are televised, that was a lot of data that was just pushed out over the earwaves. And I think there's a couple of things that I'd like you to just maybe go into a little more detail for, for the general public.
Okay.
And that is just explaining the tax levy, so people know what that is. And then also, when we talk about, you know, the 30% residential figure, if you could explain how that actually is a dollar amount, and it is not necessarily based on the value of their property or their tax bill, it doesn't necessarily equate directly to that. And also, if you could just talk a little bit about how the tax rate can go down, but the real estate taxes can go up because of the increase in the value of the home. So if you can maybe just kind of touch on a few of those points, just for the general public's knowledge, I'd appreciate that.
Sure. The tax levy is the amount of money the city can raise through their residential, or real estate and personal property taxes. So that, that levy of 109,325,449, that comes from the total value of the city, which actually is, this is the first time it's gone over 10. Right now, it's 10 billion, 505 million, 789,439. Last year, I think it was 9.8 billion. So this is the first time it's gone over 10. And, so that's the amount of money raised through property taxes. And then the residential exemption was the next question?
Yes.
So, let me go to...
Currently, we're at 30%, and your request is that we stay at 30%.
So it's, so the, so the, so the amount of money, so let me see if it's, last year is around $206,000 off. So it is the average value of the whole residential class. So from single families to empty lots to large apartment buildings, the whole class, and then we divide it by the number of parcels, and we come up with an average residential value. And from that is where the 30% is taken from. So this year, that average value is 743, so it'll be, it'll be 30% off of the 743. I think that was the number.
So basically, if I had a $10,000 tax bill, and Counselor O'Malley had an $8,000 tax bill, it's not 30% of that tax bill. We're each, we're each getting a specific dollar amount.
Based on the average bill, so yes. Last year, it was about 2,500, so, so yeah, yours would have been about 7,500.
That's a question I answer a lot for constituents, which is why, while we're, you know, on broadcasting, just kind of wanted to get it out there, that it's a set dollar amount.
Understood. Yep. It is a set dollar amount. It's not specific to your property.
And then the last question was just how, you know, with the tax rate going down, which is what you just heard, going down, you know, to $10.41, why someone's tax bill would go up?
Value adjustments. So the market's still going up at a pretty fast pace. Remember, these, the fiscal '24 actual values are based on sales that happened in 2022. So in the beginning of 2022, we were still seeing 3% interest rates. That changed as we got through the year. I think by the end of the year, they're around 7%. And there's still really low inventory. And that's because nobody wants to move, because they have those 3% interest rates. So when something does come on the market, there's still a high demand. So values do continue to go up, and, and, you know, that can outpace, the, the increase in values actually contributes to the tax rate being lower, but some people's homes, depending on what they are, can outpace that, that difference.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, so basically, people, if you paid $200,000 for your house, and it's now estimated value is $650,000, you're paying your tax rate on $650,000.
Correct.
Yes. So, anyway. Well, thank you. Just that little bit of clarification, I just think helps, you know, set the stage for many of the questions that I think will start to pop up here from the other counselors. And the lights have already started to light up. Counselor O'Leenahan.
Thank you, Madam President. That's actually a good segue, because I wanted to kind of build off, a question that I get a lot is how does our assessment cycle contribute to our valuation? So in other words, if you've lived here a really long time, the example that you just gave, you bought a $200,000 house, and you know, in theory, if you were to sell right now, what it would likely to sell for. A question I get often is, well, how does the city determine what the value is when a, a house hasn't sold? And you're saying it's from calendar 2022?
For fiscal '24, it's 2022.
Okay.
We adjust it every year based on market value. The valuation date's January 1.
Okay.
So for fiscal '24, the valuation date is January 1, 2023.
Okay.
And we looked at sales that occurred in 2022. And that happens every single year.
So you look at sales, but how does that impact existing properties that haven't sold? I guess is the question that I struggle to explain. How do you determine what a house is worth that hasn't sold?
So we, we take those sales and we stratify them.
Okay.
By style, size, age, and we adjust our valuation tables, and everything comes up.
So it's really not related to how houses get assessed face-to-face?
Nope. I believe the only place I know of that does that is California.
Okay. It's just, it's a question I get, and I want to make sure I can explain it the right way.
So if you bought your house in 1970 in California.
Yeah.
For 30 grand, you might still be paying taxes on 30 grand.
Which I think constrains them, from what I understand.
Yeah.
No, this was a great presentation. I think it's helpful for the community to understand not only how we do this, and how the exemption, I think, is attractive, but also how that changes, and what trends we're seeing in terms of not just the valuation, but how many homes are getting the exemption. I want to thank you, as I do every year, for staying on top of kind of auditing that, and making sure that that reflects who actually does live and isn't renting out a house. I know that was something that a lot of us brought up for many years, just making sure that we're accurate on that. And also, I think the other thing that I want to kind of underscore for the community is just that we are, I think Counselor Cologne Hayes, I remember you bringing this up last year, we are levying to the maximum allowed, that we, this is where the revenue for the city comes from, and I think a lot of times residents ask where, you know, can we raise more off property taxes? Why are we unable to afford this or that? And the good news here is that we really do levy to the maximum that the, that the state, that Prop 2.5 allows, that you take that value, there's that ceiling, but you can levy up to the 2.5%, and then...
Plus new growth.
That was my last question, is how do we factor in new growth? Because I think that's something that, for folks listening, is important to understand why those of us up here are so focused on commercial growth. It's because it's the only opportunity to add to what you have outlined here.
That's not true. So 368 Pleasant Street is, is, I think, altogether with all those condos, I think it's about $20 million. So convert in value.
Okay.
So that converts to new tax revenue. So that is new growth. It was an exempt building before.
Oh, I see what you mean.
So new growth is something that's never been taxed before.
Okay.
So in addition, a new deck, not a rebuilt deck, but one that wasn't there before, a new building, whether residential or commercial, it's, it's, it's every class of property. We have a ton of new growth in our underground utilities.
Is that that large $100 million?
504, yeah.
Okay. So when you said, the part that was inaccurate was because I was talking about just commercial, you're saying it's, okay.
It's everything.
Understood.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that. I'm all set. Thank you.
Counselor McDonald.
Yeah, thank you. I, you know, I, I'm struck by how a lot of the presentation in, you know, a lot of what you have to do is basically backfilling from that hard number, that 109 number, where everything starts, right? And that's the state cap, based on Prop 2.5% of what we're allowed to raise, based on what we know. And then everything is backfilled from there, based on kind of how much, you know, if, if I own a house, how much my house is worth relative to the whole, to the whole valuation of the city, and we just divide it all up, and everybody gets their portion. So I think it is counterintuitive, because most of us expect tax, you know, your income tax rate is, if your income goes up, it goes, it goes up. But instead, we're looking at the citywide tax, property tax income, and factoring what everybody's share of that would be. Am I describing that correctly?
I think so, yeah, except it's not the only source of revenue. It's the biggest source.
For property taxes, I mean, for property taxes.
Right, yes.
Yes. Thank you. So I, you know, I, I just wanted to ask, it, it's my recollection that, first of all, the, the residential exemption can, can, it is possible to go up to a higher residential exemption.
Yep, up to 35%.
Up to 35%. But that's not something that Malden has chosen to do.
Correct.
Is there, I have also heard that there is talk at the state of making it, making it an opt-in possibility for cities to create an exemption for affordable, income-restricted housing, which I think some cities or towns have done through home rule petitions, but it would be like, much like the shift factor, be something that cities could simply opt into. Have you even followed this?
It would be a shift, so it would be something that the city absorbs, whereas, you know, a lot of the statutory exemptions we have are, we're reimbursed by the state, this, if the, it's a local option. So if the city wants it, it's something the city has to absorb. So it's, it would be shifted somewhere else. You'd still be raising the same amount of money, it would just be shifted onto somebody else.
Right. But is that an option that we could opt into now, or is that something that's being discussed?
I, I wouldn't be the one that, you guys would bring that up. I wouldn't.
I just meant, do you know if the law allows us to do that? Or is that something that, I wasn't clear whether that is an existing opt-in for cities, or whether it's something that's just being proposed at the sale, but hasn't been finalized.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, I don't know who the right person to ask about that is. Now, or do I think it's actionable tonight? But I think it is something that's really worth looking into in the future. I mean, I think as, as we're trying to talk about, I mean, these are terrifying numbers, the average residential value, 689, 743, 744. I mean, that's so high.
So that's the average, so some of these have...
And, and is that the mean, when you say the average?
I used averages.
But I mean, it's nothing median.
Because when I get into meetings and means, it makes it even more confusing, I feel like, for, for people watching.
But I mean, the way that you've calculated that is you took the total residential property and divided by number of units. You didn't line them all up and pick the middle one.
Right, exactly. Divided it by the number of parcels, and that was the average.
Got it.
So we have apartment complexes that are at $200 million.
Right.
So, or 170 million, I think, is our biggest. So those, those numbers get skewed. I think the average single-family bill last year in Malden, with the residential exemption, was $4,477, which is a much more palatable number, in my mind.
Right. I was, I was not referencing the tax bill. I was referencing the cost it, it takes to buy or rent housing.
Yeah, just to get into, to the city, yeah.
Is that that, I just mean that that's going up quickly every year, so I think affordability is a key concern. I appreciate that Malden has, and I think will likely to continue to do everything we can to make our taxes, our tax bill affordable, while raising as much money as we're able to do to fund our core city services. I was just naming that I think this, the, the ability to enact an affordability, income-based shift is something that I think is worth investigating in the, in the coming year. So, we can talk more about that. Thank you.
Nope.
Thank you, Counsel McDonald. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Counsel President. Thank you very much, Mr. Kramer. You had said that the total tax base, is it the total tax base approached 10?
It surpassed.
Surpassed? What, what number?
So the whole value of the whole city...
Was it 10?
It's on the first slide.
10.5 billion, it's a billion, right?
My computer has now frozen, so I can't, I can't get it.
Yeah. That's, that's an amazing number.
So yeah, I believe last year, that was 9.8 billion, but now it's 10.505, I think.
And that is, you're saying, based on the valuation back in 2022?
Like, yes. So, so that is, that is based on January 1, 2023, using sales that occurred in 2022.
Perfect. So that's, so that's delayed a bit, and that's quite a, a number.
And it's booming up.
And, and so then the question is going to be, this coming year, whether or not the commercial real estate downturn impacts that number, right?
I think it already has. I mean, if, there was, there was a decrease already. It'll be interesting to see what happens. I wish I could predict the market. Even, it's just, it's, it's odd to me that the residential market is still climbing the way it is, with interest rates, and, I can't explain it.
And I apologize. What is the split between, of that value between residential and commercial? And maybe you can follow up after. So of, of the 10.5 billion, like, is it like 90% of it?
So it's actually this slide. So last year, 88.3% of, so after the shift, it's this slide that's up now. After the shift last year, 79.78 of that value is residential. 20.22 is commercial, industrial, and personal, after the shift. And the numbers to the left of that are before the shift.
Okay, okay. So, so, so aft, after the shift, 79, okay, so 79.78% of our tax levy comes from residential, and 20.22% comes from, okay, great. And then, in terms of tax abatements, have you seen an increase in tax abatements on the commercial side?
No. We call the market. We really have very few. Last year, I... Last year, I think, when I started, I think we had about 57 active ATV cases, and I think maybe we have four or five now.
And that probably reflects the fact that you're prop, you're, you're doing a good job valuing them based on their.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Congratulations.
No, no, I, I got, I got rid of a lot. I think, I think, I mean, the number of abatement applications we get has drastically dropped as well. I've been told that before I started, there were over 300, um, and I think last year we got 65.
Great, that's great news.
Mostly residential.
And the only other question I had is if, if, if property owners, we have some large property owners that historically leave their properties vacant. Since they are already leaving their properties vacant, th- their property value would already be what it is, like, there wouldn't be much fluctuation there, right? They can't argue that, hey, my empty building is worth.
So, commercial and industrial properties are based on the income approach, so there's an, there's an argument for that, but there's also a movement for, um, it's called dark store, um, because some, uh, institutional investors probably, it's probably more common for institutional investors, but they will intentionally leave a building vacant for tax benefits.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, we are not doing that, we don't, I mean, I think it's more of a Midwest thing right now where they've ruled, value them as if they were rented at market rate.
Okay.
Even if they're empty. We're not doing that. I don't know if anybody on the East Coast is at this point.
And then in term, uh, in terms of like, um, the, the vacancies, I believe we also have a vacancy surcharge, right? I think if you, if you leave a property vacant, I think we, we charge them, right? I think that might be through the Board of Health.
Yeah, that wouldn't be, I don't know about that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, because usually it's, you, it's happened traditionally for residential.
Oh, so it's a blighted, for blighted property?
Exactly.
So that's different, so that's a fine, if, if, for blighted properties, properties that are vacant and the owners have let them go, the city will find them to, to clean them up.
We do do that, but I think we also have.
We have to register them. A, a vacant property in the city of Malden needs to be registered, and there is a, there is a fee for registering it. I don't know what it is, but.
Something that I can follow up with Chris Webb on, for some reason, I think that it's, there is obviously, if it's a problem property, we can do what you're saying, but I think that we also have a thing where if you leave your property vacant, we can assess a charge for that. Um, so I'll just double check with that, but, um, great job, it's, it's great to hear that we don't have very many tax abatements. And, and can you repeat the, is it stratify you said was the word?
Yeah, so.
Stratify. I like vocabulary. Can you define that for me?
Um, so you basically, you, you slice things different ways to look at them. So you isolate your bill, which would be the age, um, style, size, age, location, and you just isolate those specific things when you're looking at the sales to see really how much each of those classes has increased over the past year.
Perfect.
Or during that year.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you, Councilor O'Malley. Councilor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you, uh, thank you for the presentation. Um, I wanted to clarify also for people watching, a couple of questions that I get, and, um, I think, um, Councilor Linehan might have touched on this a little. So one thing I get asked from the public a lot is, um, they think that this residential tax, like, it's lowering our taxes, like, we're not collecting, um, all the taxes that we should to, like, to, um, so we can afford our, our, our public services. Can you explain how that's a shift again, like, we're not losing?
So we collect the same amount of money. The, the, what happens when you adopt the residential exemption is the tax rate increases, so you saw, Mike, this is frozen now, but a single tax rate would be $10.41, but because we have the residential exemption, I believe it was, it's this year 11.70. So over a dollar more. And so if you are getting that benefit, if you're, if you're above that break-even point, you just start to pay the higher tax rate, you do not get a discount. All of that, of the higher value properties carry the weight of the lower value properties.
And that would be most like, commercial, right? Like?
No commercial.
No commercial.
It's all residential.
Okay.
Well, it depends, so large, large apartment buildings are, in my mind, residential.
Okay, okay, that's what I meant.
Anything, any use class that starts with a 1.
Okay.
So a single family will be 101, we can get into all that, but 101 is a single family and so on.
And then, just a quick, um, do you have to apply, do, does a homeowner have to apply every year, or once you apply?
Nope, once you apply, the only reason you would have to change if there's, or reapply is if there's a change to your deed. Um, and if there is a change to your deed, we will automatically remove you. And we do mail out, uh, that is the, that's new, so a lot of people don't know, but we do mail out applications to people as a courtesy, but if there is any change in your deed, whether it's a, it's a, whether you sell it, or, or you're a new owner, or if you put it into a trust or get divorced, or there's any change of ownership, you will be removed the following year, no matter what.
Good to know, thank you. And then the last question, um, just, uh, curious why, um, you're suggesting we stay at the 30,000, not, and we'll go up to 35%?
Um, I don't suggest that, that's something you guys decide.
Got it, all right.
Thank you. Councilors, thank you, Councilor Cologne Hayes, Councilor Spatafora.
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks, Nate, for this presentation, even with the technology challenges, it was great, very informative. Couple things, I will just get on my, I'm gonna get on my, my soapbox for the rest of council and everybody watching, I mean, I think this right here, Councilor O'Malley started the discussion, this is staggering to me because when you look at, when you look at Malden, at 88% of the tax base is residential, right? Even though we're shifting it, which lowers the rate, effectively, almost 90% of the city is residential. And if we continue to make that higher, say like Medford or Melrose, that, this program actually hurts more people, right? Because if, if we go to 95% residential, the tax, we can't shift it anywhere.
I think, honestly, Mal- in Malden, it works better than most of the cities that have it because we have so many large apartment complexes.
Correct, which is, which is another problem for me.
111 and 112 class, which are, 111 would be four to eight units, and 112 will be eight plus all the way up to, I think our largest one is Granada Highlands.
Granada, Granada Highlands, 180 Kennedy Drive.
They have 919 units there.
Which, that debate should be, they should be tax commercial, not residential, that's a state debate, right? I mean, because at, at that point, you're not a residential tax rate, you're a commercial tax rate.
Nope, you're residential.
But that's, I know, but the state doesn't allow us to do that.
Right.
In my opinion, that's commercial.
Right.
You should be, you should be charged at commercial.
So we have so many, we have over 300 parcels in those two classes, just, just huge values.
But if they were gone, we would be in trouble.
Oh, yeah, we would, it, it, yeah, nobody would benefit.
And so I think one of the things we've been talking about as a council is looking at, at least, saving our tax base in terms of keeping whatever industry and commercial space we have, we'd love to have some more, but I think this, this shows that we have to protect that because the, the bigger burning's gonna go on, the, the resident, the residents, and I think everybody's concerned the cost of living in Malden is expensive, but if we keep on driving on our businesses, and, and I'm, I'm far the 30%, so I'm not saying I'm not for that, but I think we have to figure out a way through our planning and zoning to make sure that we protect what we have, if not encourage them to, because there's, it's, there's no, it's not ironic that Saugus and Everett have that tax base because they have some, like Everett, we know the casino, but they also have that power plant. Saugus has Route 1.
Yep.
Right? We know that that tax base is there. So this idea of having a single source of taxes scares me because if that number goes up, we know the apartment building saved us, but that's the only insulator we have.
Right.
In that shift. And I, and I, and I believe by having a diverse tax base, you can stabilize our, our ability, right? To, to continue to drive the services and infrastructure for our residents. I'm probably the only council who's gonna say that it's a balancing act to make sure that your, your, it's, if the $10 billion number's nice and the taxes are somewhat on the higher end, because without that additional tax layer, right, of the valuation, we can't afford all the other things, right? We, we've just left a, an ordinance meeting, we've talked about raises at 2 and 1/2, 2 and 1/2, 2 and 1/2, some are 3, some are 4s. Well, right off the bat, you can only raise a 2 and 1/2%.
What was, Nate?
The whole tax level. What was, I didn't tell you about that. I'll tell you. But, but for the, the community doesn't realize that, we can only go up 2 and 1/2% by law.
2 and 1/2% plus new growth.
So if, if you give somebody three, yeah, and the, the new growth's been a challenge, right? Because we're, we're kind of running out.
This year it's a little higher.
Because they.
We're over, I think we're one, uh, 1.3 million.
Is that all the public utilities though, right? A lot of that's the?
A lot of it's that.
Yeah.
Um, some of it's 368 Pleasant.
368, and then we'll hopefully get the hospital.
735 Broadway, where Town Line used to be.
Yep.
Um, the new Plaza, where Papa Chino's used to be, um, the new public storage building, there's a lot, there are, there are a lot of things going on.
Yeah, there's, there's running out of squads to put those new growths.
I know.
Right? So I, I, for, for, for me, I think this is a good exercise for the councils, we move forward in the planning, is just to realize, well, this is great, I'm for the 30%, I know we've looked at 35 and I'm willing to look at it again. I think this is just, this speaks volumes to me in terms of the tax base and looking to make sure that we can maintain what we have moving forward. So, thank you.
Okay. Well, seeing no other lights, um, Mr. Kramer, I really want to thank you for coming down and explaining this all to us. Um, so now it is time for the public hearing to take place. Okay, so, I don't have a gavel today, which I would normally, normally bang to say the public hearing is, no, thank you, Councilor O'Malley. I know, I might break the marble. Um, anyway, so I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Mr. Kramer, I'm gonna actually ask you to step away from the podium just to give anyone the opportunity to come up that would, might like to speak. So anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Okay. Anyone, once again, wishing to speak in favor of this petition, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. And the third and last time, anyone who would like to speak in favor, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none and hearing no one, um, I will now declare that portion of the public hearing closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the petition, please come forward and state your name and address. Anyone wishing to speak in fa- in opposition to the petition, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing no movement in the audience, I will say it one more time, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing no movement and hearing no one, I now declare that portion of the public hearing closed. Now I need a motion to adopt the order. Oh, Councilor O'Malley, you have your mic on?
I was just gonna move to adopt the residential exemption of 30% and the 2024 tax rates.
Okay. Do I have a second to that? Seconded by, oh, get a bunch of seconds, I'm gonna go with the Finance Chair on that one, seconded by Councilor, um, McDonald. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Councilor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Councilor Condon?
Yes.
Councilor Crowe?
Yes.
Councilor Linehan?
Yes.
Councilor McDonald?
Yes.
Councilor O'Malley?
Yes.
Councilor Sika?
Yes.
Councilor Spatafora?
Yes.
Councilor Winslow?
Yes.
Councilor Murphy?
Yes. Okay. That has passed. Next order of business. I should officially say the order has been adopted.
Paper 447-23, Committee Report. The Standing Committee on License to Huma's Referees Papers 406, 407, 408, 409, 410, 411, and 412, Series of 2023, Having Considered the Same, Make the Following Report. Committee recommends Papers 406, 407, 408, 409, 410, and 412 favorably to the full council. Additionally, Committee recommends Paper 411 unfavorably to the full council.
On Councilor Sika's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Proposed. Committee report has been received. Councilor Sika for the committee.
The clerk is gonna read the petitions.
I'll read the papers.
Okay.
Paper 406-23, Petition, Amusement Machines. GLS Associates, Inc., 50 Holden Street, Malden, five machines for renewal. 407-23, Petition, Amusement Machines, Loyal Order of the Moose Lodge, 1910. 562 Broadway, Malden, for two machines renewal. 408-23, Petition, Amusement Machines. Pearl Street Station, 53 Summer Street, Malden, two machines renewal. 409-23, Petition, Extended Hours, Bode Borg, Boston LLC, 90 Pleasant Street, Malden, hours Friday, Saturday, Sunday, 10:00 AM to 3:00 AM renewal. Paper 410-23, Petition, Extended Hours, GNR Convenience, Inc., DBA Supreme Food Mart, 1018 Eastern Avenue, Malden, hours 24/7 for renewal. Paper 411-23, Petition, Extended Hours, Cass, Casa Foods, Inc., Food Truck, 637 Broadway, Malden. Hours, seven days.
Really quickly, that one's not included in this bundle? That's the one we're denying?
Yeah. I'm reading all of them for the committee report.
No, we're gonna.
And there's two separate votes, one to, one to deny and one to approve.
Oh, okay. I was thinking you were gonna read all of the ones we were gonna vote in favor of, and then you were gonna read the one we were gonna vote to deny. In my mind, I apologize.
Sorry.
That's fine, okay.
Um, Casa Foods, Inc., Food Truck. Hours, seven days, 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM, and that's new. 412-23, Petition, Extended Hours, Planet Fitness, 795 Eastern Ave., Malden, hours open 24 hours, from Monday 12:00 AM to Friday 9:00 PM for a renewal.
Thank you. So the License Committee met last week to discuss all of these petitions, the majority of them were all renewals. I think the only one that was new was the one that we're going to, uh, recommend that we deny. So on, um, that note, I'm, I'm looking to make a motion to approve all the petitions except for 411-23 right now. So, motion to approve.
So a motion to grant the petitions by Councilor Sika, seconded by Councilor Condon with the exclusion of 411-23. All those, oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Cologne Hayes? You have a light?
Oh, thank you.
I just wanted to bring up something that I had just learned in the License Committee, just for anyone, if they're reading this, that Bodeborg, it looks like they have an extension to three a.m., but that's just, um, for special occasions and, um, maybe a party that they were having, just, just wanted to make that clear before we vote on that they're not opening until three a.m.
Thank you. So, on Counselor Sika's motion to grant the petition, seconded by Counselor Condon, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The petitions have been granted.
Thank you. And then on paper, um, four eleven twenty-three, the committee met last week and discussed in detail, um, this is a new restaurant that's going at six thirty-seven Broadway, the old Paul Giannelli Real Estate Building, kind of next to the Town Line, and it's in between Town Line and six twenty-one. Um, this restaurant also has a food truck, and I think that they were hoping to be able to operate it till two a.m. in the parking lot and maximize off of Town Line's patrons coming out so they could feed the people in the parking lot, but, um, as the ward counselor of this location, I think that's a recipe for disaster, as Town Line's trying to get rid of everybody, they're going to go to the other side of the parking lot because this parking lot is kind of all the same, and it could actually potentially attract different drunk people from different areas of the city, um, to congregate in the parking lot of the Town Line, and I, I, I don't necessarily think that this is a good thing, so I, I, we did, um, make a motion to deny this, um, in the committee, and I hope that we will deny it on the floor as well. Counselor Winslow.
Counselor Winslow.
Um, yeah, I, I know, I mean, this is very near Ward Six because the Broadway's the boundary, and I know in discussing, uh, with residents in that area, noise from Town Line can be an issue, so ha, having another, uh, business there after hours that could attract people outside is a particular issue, so, um, so I am not in favor of this petition. Thank you.
Counselor McDonald?
Yeah, thank you. I was not in this License Committee meeting, was there, so if we reject the petition, is, do you know if the business owner expects to file a petition with different hours? Or does that imply like they won't be able to?
So that I'm unaware of, but after speaking to Chris Webb in the Board of Health, we've never extended a food truck license after eleven p.m. in the city, ever. This, this would be the first if we were to have granted it. Um, so no, I, I have no, I have not even spoken to these people, they haven't reached out to me, I, I don't even know what their game plan is over there, really. I just saw this and thought it might not be the best idea to have in the parking lot. And, you know, after speaking to the, um, Building Commissioner Nelson, he also made a good point that it's a food truck, so it technically wouldn't just be for this particular location. You, we would be extending the hours till two a.m., they could be at Idle Hands till two a.m., they could be at Malden Station till two a.m. They could be anywhere all over the entire city because it's a mobile food truck.
Right. My question was more just that, I, I, I know this is, like, I, I've encountered this, the owners in another context, and so I know they're trying to build a business, and I just want them to be able to get a license to operate, even if we're saying, well, we don't want you to operate that late. So, moving forward, if we deny this, could they come back and file for another license for different hours?
So they wouldn't, they're, they only need this because it's extended hours. So this isn't going to deny. Yes, so this isn't going to deny the food truck.
Okay.
Um, license, we only get it when it's out of the realm of the normal business hours.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, no, I apologize that I misunderstood what you were asking at the beginning, but yes, no, they, this will not prevent them from being, being able to use this food truck at anything, it's just between the hours of eleven p.m. and two a.m. Okay?
So, seeing no other lights, um, on Counselor Sika's motion to deny the petition, seconded by Counselor Winslow, all those in favor? Aye, opposed. Path, denial passes unanimously. Okay, next order of business, please. Counselor Crowe? Okay, as, Counselor Crowe, is this about the docket or is it personal privilege?
Docket.
The docket, okay. Counselor Crowe, hold on a second. Oh, you are, okay.
Excuse me. I wanted to make a motion to take, um, Paper one seventy-two of twenty-three off the table, and it is, I'll tell you why, for the purpose of, um, you know, granting, it is a petition by National Grid, um, that we heard from them in April, April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three, and, um, at first, they wanted to, um, do underground conduit across, um, Main Street from Cross Street, and, um, and, but when I had, that's what they had submitted. When I had met with them, um, they told me it was just going to be in the sidewalk, underground conduit to get to one sixteen Main Street. So there has been a number of emails sort of back and forth, we looked up back the history, some of the.
We should kind of be taking it off the table.
Okay.
We're going into so much detail. Do you have the sound in paper? So.
So I make a motion to take it from the table.
We have a motion, we have a motion by Counselor Crowe to take Paper one seventy-two dash twenty-three off the table, seconded by Counselor O'Malley. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Paper is now off the table. Counselor Crowe for the paper.
I apologize, wanted to say, why was taken off the table? So they did send us, the first time when we heard this petition, it was actually not really what they wanted to do, they kind of sent us the wrong information, and so, and we, it was tabled really because we asked for the double pole inventory, which we did receive, and I think Lisa has, and we kind of figured out where we go with that information. One of the other things we wanted to do, and I'll be working with Ally a little bit, is about getting, um, an inventory of the abandoned underground equipment, infrastructure. So that kind of came up, and they were, they were going to talk to our law office and their law office, but we got to, we're going to keep moving that part forward just so we can have an understanding of what is underneath the ground. But this petition is for just the conduit on the sidewalk, so I wanted to make a motion to grant this petition with the conditions, um, actually, we're doing a lot of work in that area on Main and Cross Street, doing lots of new lights, we have lots of new sidewalks, so my, um, one, one of the restrictions would be that the new sidewalk would kind of extend where the new sidewalk is being built, so it's kind of the next two blocks up, not blocks, like city blocks, but two, so not to have like an old sidewalk, then a little new sidewalk, then an old sidewalk. So, with all the other things that we put in when you grant a petition.
So Counselor O'Malley, is that one speaker or does this one second?
I'll second and speak. So I'll second Counselor Crowe's motion. Yeah, this, this is something that is kind of, we shouldn't hold this particular, um, application up, um, or petition up. The reason why we did table it was because they needed to provide us new plans that actually reflected what they wanted to do, which we now have. But the discussion that, um, that Counselor Crowe talked about in terms of abandoned infrastructure that will work with the legal department, um, it, it's not quite clear right now whether or not we have the ability to require o, old infrastructure to be removed when new infrastructure is being put in. We might have to, we did set that as conditions for some of our gas infrastructure, um, and one of the things that we might need to do as a city, what we, which we would have to decide on, is whether or not we want to push that topic, uh, bring it to the Department of Public Utilities, and if the Department of Public Utilities decides to strike down our conditions that, you know, old gas infra, infrastructure needs to be removed before new gas infrastructure can be replaced, um, if they decide to strike that down, we might need to, uh, go to court and set precedent. And one of the reasons why that's important right now is that the gas lines that are being put in the ground today are probably going to be the ga, the last gas lines that ever get put in the ground, um, and having generations and generations of old gas infrastructure makes it extremely difficult to do construction in our roads. Uh, and one of the things I don't think that we fully, um, understand and really appreciate is that our roads are our property, it's our public property, so it's when we allow a gas utility to put their, uh, or their utilities to put, um, their infrastructure in our ground, we're allowing them to put it on our property the same way as if they were asking to put it in our front yards or our backyards. So it's something that we need to look forward, uh, in terms of the long scheme, uh, so I'm in support of this, I don't think we should hold up this application, uh, but look forward to having that conversation with the legal department and with the council. Thank you.
No other lights. On Counselor Crowe's motion to grant the petition, seconded by Counselor O'Malley with the following conditions, that the city engineer be called when dig safe is notified, and that the streets and sidewalks be restored to the satisfaction of the Director of Public Works. All those in favor? Aye, opposed?
We wanted to add, I'm sorry.
And?
Sort of an additional.
Okay, go right ahead.
It is really that they extend, they extend the, the new, the new sidewalk to connect to the sidewalk that's being poured down. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So we're doing, like I said, a lot of work, so they're pouring new sidewalks. Where, I believe this will start, it'll be a couple of, maybe three or four panels separating, so I want the new, this, the sidewalk that they're going to return, I wanted to include those three or four panels.
Okay, so do we know which three, so if you're looking at it, can you give me like something a little more specific? If you're look, if you're looking at it head on, that you want three or four panels to the right?
Because this, this is seventy-five feet, so I want to extend it.
Or an additional three panels?
Yes.
Is it towards Medford Street or is it towards Wigglesworth?
The end result will be, um, to service, um, one sixteen Main Street, uh, one sixteen Main Street, but it's going to begin from about one twelve Main Street.
Do you, do you want them to do it towards Medford Street or towards Wigglesworth?
Medford.
Okay, so towards Med, so it's extended additional three panels towards Medford Street?
Right.
Okay, perfect. We got it. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, no, all those opposed? Petition's granted. Just wanted to make sure, just wanted to make sure, just wanted to make sure. Anything else coming off the table? Counselor Winslow, one second, let me get your lit up here. Okay.
So, uh, I make a motion to take Paper one seventy-one twenty-three off the table, please.
Okay, on Counselor Winslow's motion to take one seventy-one point, dash twenty-three off the table, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Paper is now off the table. Counselor Winslow for the paper.
So this, similar to Paper one seventy-two twenty-three, was tabled in part to get this double pole list and the, um, additional information about removing infrastructure, so it's a similar situation. This is really some conduit work related to the new storage building going up on Eastern Avenue, so, um, so, uh, I think the only condition I would ask is that, um, that any sidewalk reconstruction be made consistent with the sidewalk reconstruction required by the new storage building, so, so I, I, I'm, there's another petition coming forward, and I just, uh, want to make sure that there's coordination between what National Grid does and what the storage building does, so that, uh, that would be a requirement that they coordinate sidewalk reconstruction, so.
Thank you. Counselor Crowe, Counselor Condon, did you want to speak?
No.
Oh, you just wanted to what? Oh, press, oh, okay, we'll have to pressure the light again. Okay, on Counselor Con, uh, sorry, on Counselor Winslow's motion to pass the petition, subject to the following, that dig safe, the engineer be called when dig safe is notified, that the streets and sidewalks be restored to the satisfaction of the Director of Public Works, and that the National Grid coordinate with the owners of the storage facility to make sure.
The reconstruction of the sidewalk is consistent.
Is consistent. All those in favor of passing this petition?
Aye.
Opposed. The petition has been granted. Anything else coming off the table, folks?
The docket is clear.
Okay, there we go. All right. So now we have personal privilege. And the lights light up. Counselor Linehan?
Thank you. I wanted to very quickly thank everyone who came to the holiday tree lighting at the pond this weekend. We had a great turnout, it was very cold, but we still had a great crowd, and I particularly want to thank Counselor Spatafora for, um, inviting the Malden High Coral Arts Society, they did an amazing job, and I would love to have them come back every year. The other thing I wanted to mention is that the BBPTO is having a craft fair this weekend at the school from noon to four. It's awesome, it's on Sunday, and, uh, last year there was, I think, over forty vendors, it was really amazing, so if you're looking to get some holiday shopping done, come on down to BB on Sunday. That's all I've got.
Counselor Condon?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to take this opportunity to, uh, recognize one of my constituents in Ward Two, Joe Levine, Director of Recreation. He was inducted into the Malden High School Hall of Fame for his distinguished service award. Anybody that's ever seen Joe work with the kids, he goes well above and beyond what he's supposed to do as a Director of Recreation. I'm just proud to have him as a resident of Ward Two, and more importantly, my dear friend, so, congratulations, Joe.
Thank you, Counselor Condon. Well-deserved recognition for Joe Levine. Counselor Winslow?
Yeah, a few things I wanted to thank, um, the DPW and Bob Knox in particular for, um, helping to put up the Maplewood Christmas tree, which is up there now, and with the, um, help of the future Maplewood Square Committee, we also have some nice murals, um, right behind the, um, the tree, so it just brightens up the corner there, and also, um, the great work, um, to replace all the lumineers in Maplewood Square, and I think that's probably also happened out in front of the, um, high school and the library, you'll notice the pedestrian antique lights are much brighter because we've upgraded them all LED, so all thanks to, uh, I, and Bob Knox and DPW, I think that was Eric Rubin, um, helping with the, the lights, so that makes, uh, things much brighter and cheerier there, and, uh, if you want to come down and see some of that, um, on December ninth, I, um, the Salem Woods School PTO is having their craft fair in the morning, I believe that starts at ten, and then, um, at, uh, in the afternoon, the six-thirty Salem Crafters Club is having at six-thirty Salem Community Room their craft fair, so there's some crafts, you can come down to get, um, down in Maplewood and then come by and, uh, shop at Maplewood Square as well. Thank you, Kramer.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. Counselor McDonald?
Hi, all. I just wanted to give a brief update as the liaison to the Racial Equity Commission, since hadn't shared, uh, much about that. In, uh, in the spring, the council approved, um, uh, a paper that extended the timeline for the Racial Equity Commission, I want to let you know, um, the commission's been working hard since then, and I think is on a really good track. Um, we, uh, the city has recently hired a new DEI, Diversity Equity Inclusion Coordinator, promoted, uh, Kashana Harling, so we're glad to have Kashana in the role, and we have, um, also brought on a consulting group, um, that does a lot of work with municipalities on equity and planning issues, who will be helping us to lead a number of, uh, public meetings and community engagement processes early in the new year. Um, and so just wanted to let you know that the, the work of the Racial Equity Commission is on track, hope to complete our report probably by summer next year, uh, and, uh, and have, and can extend longer for the timeline that we laid out, if that makes sense, but, uh, excited for the work ahead, and we have our next public meeting this Thursday, but we're meeting about monthly, uh, if you ever want to join. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Seeing no other lights from the chair, just want to say that, uh, Santa Claus will be making his seventy-fourth appearance to Pine Banks Park on Saturday, December sixteenth. He will arrive, uh, with his sleigh and reindeers at two p.m., and there will be arts and crafts from two p.m. to four p.m. Santa will be there from two p.m. to six p.m., and there will be hot chocolate and cookies, um, served, and, uh, we'll also have some characters there, we're expecting, uh, Frosty and Rudolph, as well as Elmo, and hopefully Olaf. So, to check and see if Olaf's coming, so, but other than that, it should be a fun day, so we're hoping everyone will come down. It's, uh, outside of St. Rocco's, I think it's the longest-standing tradition in the city of Malden, so we're happy that it's still going on, so hope to see everyone on the sixteenth. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn by Counselor Sika, seconded by Counselor Condon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The council is adjourned for the evening. Everyone have a wonderful.